Are you ready, Jeff?
Well, good afternoon and welcome to the Oklahoma City Planning Commission. Before we begin our meeting, I want to do just a couple of quick reminders for you. First, if you'd like to address the commission, we do ask that you fill out one of these forms. They are located right outside, right at the desk before you enter the council chambers. We do require that you fill out this form and submit it to the desk right here so that we will be able to call on you when your item that you'd like to speak about is called on. We do ask that you please limit your comments to five minutes. And we also ask that you avoid any repetitious comments. So if your neighbors brought up a concern that you also share, we just ask that you just allow your neighbors' words to stand on behalf of both of you. And I can assure you, we are listening. Just, I'd also like to ask everyone, just a reminder that we, the golden rule is in full effect. So we're just asking everyone to please treat us and the process with the same respect that you'd like us to treat you. And I believe that with that, we are ready to begin our meeting. And we'll start with receiving the minutes from the April 13th meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I will move to receive the minutes from the April 13th meeting.
Commissioner Claire has moved that we receive the minutes from the April 13th, 2023 meeting. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're now in line for continuance requests. We'll begin with uncontested continuance requests.
Item 23 is PUD 1936. It was originally requested to defer to May 11th. It's been requested now to defer to May 25th. Item 24, SP 572, defer to May 11th. Item 25, SPOUD 1515, defer to May 11th. Item 26, SPOUD 1523, defer to May 11th. Item 27, KC 7511, defer to May 11th. Item 28, KC PC 10864, defer to May 25th. Item 29, KC PUD 1946, defer to May 25th. Item 30, SPOUD 1509, defer to May 25th. And item 31, KC PC 10867, defer to June 22nd.
Thank you. Is there anyone here wishing to be heard on any of those items?
Point of clarification, item 27, C 7511, that's deferred to May 25th?
I have May 11th. Is it?
Item 27, C 7511, is it deferred to May 25th?
Or is it?
11th.
I had May 11th. Is it? That's my understanding is May 11th.
May 11th.
Were you told 25th?
I have 25th.
Yeah, the original agenda had the 25th.
Okay, so it is the 25th. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So I think we're looking for a motion to accept the uncontested continuance requests.
I'll move to accept the uncontested continuance requests.
Commissioner Claire moves to approve of the uncontested continuance requests. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're now in line for new continuance requests.
We have one. That is item 19, KC CE 1100, defer to May 11th.
Is there anyone here wishing to be heard on item 19?
All right. I will move to grant the new continuance requests as read.
The motion is to grant the new continuance requests as read. That's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're in line for the consent docket.
Item 1 is KC 7550, final plat of Hefner Crossing, Phase 2, located south of East Hefner Road and west of North Kelly Avenue. Item 2 is KC 7551, final plat of the Homestead at Horn Valley, Section 5, located north of Northwest 23rd Street and east of North Sarah Road. Item 3, KC 7553, final plat of St. James Point Office Park, located west of Highway 152 and north of Southwest 59th Street. Item 4, KC PC 10881, application to rezone 212 Northwest 95th Street from R1 to I1. And item 5, KC PC 10883, application to rezone 3745 Northwest 37th Place from PUD 417 to I2.
Thank you. Is there anyone here wishing to be heard on any of those items? One through five. All right, seeing none, I think we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve the consent docket as read.
Commissioner Claire moves to approve the consent docket as read. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're now in line for separate items, and we'll begin with item 6.
This is KC ED 236, application to dedicate an extension of Mid-America Boulevard to the public, located south of East I-240 Service Road and west of South Air Depot.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mark Grubbs, 1800, South Sarah Road, on behalf of the applicant. This is an application to dedicate a small portion of an existing paved roadway that wasn't previously dedicated. So we're looking to dedicate this to public, to provide access to the property to the south, which will be developed in the near future. We want to have public access to it. So we, I agree with TE's 1 and 2. On TE number 3, discussed this with staff, I would like that language to be modified to state, "A turnaround is needed at the south end of the street. This turnaround may be temporary and may be removed upon the construction of a fire lane, which meets the requirements for a turnaround as defined by the IFC." I discussed that with both the Fire Marshal's Office and staff. The fact, the way it's worded now is that, or until it connects to an arterial, it may never connect to an arterial. So that's why we're requesting that TE language be modified.
Gotcha. I think before we, any questions from commissioners? Before, I was going to ask Barry if he doesn't mind making some comments about this before we get into it.
Good afternoon, Barry Lodge, Oklahoma City Public Works. Part of the discussion of trying to get the turnaround there on the, for this street is, we're being asked to take over maintenance responsibilities for this, what was originally constructed as a private driveway. If they were coming in with an application to construct this street new today, they would be required to construct this cul-de-sac at the end as this permanent turnaround. Regardless of how it connects as a fire lane, the turnaround, the cul-de-sac would be required for approval of their plans. And so I think for us, considering accepting this for public maintenance, that's a lot of the reasoning. We need to have this up to the public street standards when we accept that. So we're, that's why we're requesting that that be done. I do agree with Mark that this isn't going to connect to an arterial street. It's going to connect back to a development to the south, and that, which again is another reason for having this as the proper turnaround and not so that it just would dead-end into another private property.
So I guess I, I guess I have two questions. One, does the, does this current private drive, it does not meet city standards, correct?
Right, well, we have had inspectors go out and look at the condition of the pavement. As far as the width of the driveway, it does. I think it meets the 32-foot requirement for an industrial, industrial street to be dedicated. I don't think there were any paving cores, but inspectors went out and looked at it. From what they had said, it was in good condition, except for just a couple of areas of curb that needed to be replaced. But with, it would, because it's just dead-ending into the property, that would not meet the city standard. As far as the actual street construction that's there now, it probably does, except for the cul-de-sac that's not at the end, that it would not be an acceptable city standard.
So the repairs that you mentioned, before I get into the TE, because it sounds like that's what the dispute, the difference between you is. So the repairs that you're mentioning, does that mean that if we vote to bring this back into the city's responsibility, does that mean we're then responsible for the repair? Or are they responsible for it before this becomes official?
So the applicant, they have submitted a plan to the city for us to review for driveway connections and doing some different things down at that south end, which is kind of one of the reasons I know that the plan is to just have this go, drive right into another private development. They included on their plan, as part of that plan, to make those curb repairs. And so they would be doing that prior to the city accepting responsibility for the street.
Gotcha. Good to know. So you, so I'm clear, with Mark's, with the TE language that Mark has suggested, you are, that's not satisfactory. You'd like us to stick to the original language that's listed in the TE?
Yes. That appears to be satisfactory to the fire department, but they have a fire lane that goes all the way, that's accessible all the way around those buildings. This is going to be a connection for a public turnaround, essentially within a public street and a public right-of-way. In order to do that, they would, to build that turnaround, they're going to, they would have to dedicate some additional right-of-way also that isn't shown on this easement dedication.
Mark, do you want to respond? You want to take questions first?
So I didn't read the TE the way that Barry is describing it now. The, so as is planned now, there's parking lot at the end, proposed at the end of that. There's not a cul-de-sac yet planned there. I think that we need to continue this for two weeks. Let me discuss it also, and we may be right back here and me agreeing to that. But may, access may not be an issue, may end up not dedicating that. There's not, is there a turnaround at the end of it now? So there's not a turnaround at the end of it now. So we wouldn't, you know, if we didn't dedicate anything, then I, we might be able to do what we're doing now without dedicating that. Let me look into it a little bit and come back here if we can continue this for two weeks and come back. And I may just go ahead and agree to that, but I'd like to discuss that with my clients. It would change our complete, it would change our site plan and things, so, things I need to discuss there.
Cool. Does anybody else have any questions before we move forward? Then I think we're just ready for a motion to continue.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we continue this item to the May 11th meeting.
Commissioner Claire has moved that we continue item 6 to the May 11th meeting. Commissioner Powers has seconded that motion. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're now in line for item 7.
This is KC CE 1096, application to close a public easement within Block 2 of Edwards Courthouse Edition, located east of South Lee Avenue and south of West Reno Avenue.
Good afternoon, Mark Zitzan with Johnson &amp; Associates, Winnie Sheridan Avenue. This is a request to close an old sidewalk easement. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
This is in Ward 6. Commissioner Govine.
Yeah, I've reviewed the application. It has no, there's no connectivity issues. It's a remnant of an easement that was related to a building that no longer exists. I don't have any concerns. If there's any questions from other commissioners, I'll open that up.
Any other questions? Or? We don't have anyone signed up to speak as well.
Okay, in that case, I would move to recommend approval of CE 1096.
Commissioner Govine has moved to recommend approval of CE 1096 to City Council. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Thank you. We're now in line for item 8.
Item 8 is KC. KC CE 1101, application by the Oklahoma City Urban Renewal Authority to close and vacate a 20-foot east-west public alley in Block 8 of the Maywood Edition. A portion of platted northeast 9th Street between Blocks 8 and 17 of Maywood Edition and a 10-foot east-west alley in Block 17 of Maywood Edition, located east of Oklahoma Avenue and south of northeast 10th Street.
Hello, Cassie Porter with the Alliance for Economic Development, 105 North Hudson. The Alliance manages the Urban Renewal Authority, which is the applicant on this request, and it's just property that Okura acquired from ODOT last year. It was excess right-of-way, and so we're trying to facilitate redevelopment. Any questions?
This is in my ward. I have no questions, and I am in support. Any questions from commissioners? We have no one signed up to speak, and I cannot make the motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to recommend approval of item CE 1101 to City Council.
Commissioner Claire moves to recommend approval of CE 1101 to City Council. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're now in line for item 9.
This is PUD 1944, application to rezone 1201 Northwest 178th Street from PUD 1319.
Good afternoon, Steve Rollins, Arc Engineering Consultants, 135 Deer Creek Road in Edmond, representing the applicant. This is a PUD for an existing restaurant and retail development at the northwest corner of 178 from Western. The reason for this PUD is simply to add a veterinarian use to the property for a first perfective tenant. Otherwise, everything in the PUD is exactly the same as the PUD it's replacing or matches the development that's there. There are no TE's, I don't think, and staff recommended approval, so I'd ask for your approval.
Great.
Any questions?
Commissioner Noble.
I didn't have anything. Is there anyone here to speak?
There is no one signed up to speak.
I have a question. Will there be a, flipping through my use units really quickly, will the veterinary component have an outdoor feature as part of its, or is it all indoors?
No, no, that, it will not be allowed as part of this, of this use that we've added.
I don't see it out here, but, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think I did read that it was just the indoor use only.
That's right, yes.
Other questions from commissioners? Seeing none, I.
I have the one, the one comment I have made a number of times, which is, would you be amenable to striking "drive it" from your exterior wall finish materials? The language is, shall consist of a minimum of 50% brick veneer masonry, which I would strike "drive it," rock, stone, stucco, or wood. The next sentence reads, "Buildings finished with EPAS material shall be permitted." So I believe what we're saying here is, minimum of 50% of any of these top materials, and the rest can be EPAS? Or, do you, can you clarify what you're asking for?
This is an existing building. I have no idea if there's any on it currently, so I would not want to put us out of compliance with what we have. So I can't answer your question, I'm sorry.
I, I think that it's clear enough if we, I think just strike "drive it" from the top passage, and you're, it's not going to preclude anything that we currently have.
Right. Chairman Cravens was in charge when we did this, and I can guarantee you, there's very little EPAS.
Okay, I, yeah, that, that sounds right. Any other, I think that's a great addition, Commissioner Govine. Any, any other questions? I think we're ready for a motion.
With that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to recommend approval of PUD 1944.
The, amending part of the application to prohibit the use of.
Drive it.
Drive it from the 50% of the material. There you go. The motion is to recommend approval of PUD 1944 to City Council, subject to the amendment just read.
Just, just to be clear, I don't know if there's any EPAS on the building, so.
It's just "drive it," and it's just by the name, so EPAS is okay.
Yeah.
EPAS already include, we're, "drive" is just a proprietary name. Okay, well, I don't know if there's any of that on the building either, so I just don't want us to strike something that's on the building, and now we're out of compliance with, with what is built currently.
I think that only, this provision only applies if you build a new building, right? Yeah. So you're good. You're compliant with the building you have, if you build a new building. Sarah, do you want to clarify if we're wrong here?
Sarah Welch, Planning Department. This, this PUD is almost a copy paste from what they already had. All they were trying to do is change the use, so we, we have not studied whether or not making a change to the architectural materials would affect them, if they were to redevelop the site, perhaps. So I.
Well, the, the way that I read this is this, the statement that says, "Buildings finished with EPAS material shall be permitted," that's not qualified with any limited percentage, so "drive it" would be permitted. It's just not permitted, it's not limited to a minimum of 50%, so.
Yeah, he's making it right.
Purely clerical. You'll be fine, I mean, you're not being limited, even if you built a "drive it" building.
Okay.
So I think we're, we are, there's consensus then that, that the motion is to recommend approval of PUD 1944, and that the amendment would simply remove "drive it" from the listing of the exterior, exterior building finishes, requiring a minimum of 50%. However, buildings finished with EPAS material are permitted, so "drive it" is consistent with that. So, yeah. We also know that if, if for some reason our analysis is incorrect, the City Council can correct that as well. So we are a recommending body. How's our technology? I think, do we have the option to swathing?
There it is.
Okay, so the motion was made by Commissioner Noble. That motion was seconded by Commissioner Govine. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Thank you. We're now in line for item 10.
This is KC PC 10875, application to rezone 3645 Northwest 15th Street from R1 to C1.
Hello, Dakota Desai with SRB 100 Northeast 5th, on behalf of the applicant. This is just a rezoning application from R1 to C1, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This is in Ward 6. Commissioner Govine.
Thank you. I don't, I don't have any questions on the application. Is there anyone that wishes to speak? Is there any other?
We, we don't have anyone signed up to speak. I do have a question for staff, and it's always my, I feel like I ask this question every time we, we agreed to straight zoning. If you'll look at page 7, looking at compatibility, we do know that this property is adjacent to a residence, residentially zoned property to the east. So, classic question, what does the code require as far as the step-down in height screening and the landscape buffer next to C1?
It'll require a screening and a five-foot landscape buffer, and then additionally, the C1 is designed with, by use, with the uses that are permitted in it for locations closer to neighborhoods than you would see in your typical C3 district.
Gotcha.
Limited to one-story, it's close, right?
It will be limited to one-story, 20 feet, next to the R1, on that size of a lot.
All right. Any other questions from commissioners? All right, Commissioner.
I know, I know this is a hot topic, being the commercial, heavy commercial street, and C1, it felt okay, so.
Yeah.
I will move to approve PC 10875.
Commissioner Govine moves to recommend approval of PC 10875 to City Council. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Noble. Please cast your votes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And the motion passes. Thank you. We're now in line for item 11.
This is SPOUD 1522, application to rezone 6901 North Chertel Avenue from R1.
Good afternoon, Mark Zitzan with Johnson &amp; Associates, Winnie Sheridan Avenue. Before, he's an application that you've seen multiple times in the last couple of years. It went from R1 to an industrial spud, back to R1, and now we're back before you with a SPOUD with a modified R1 to allow for two single-family homes to be built. I don't believe we have any TE's. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but we would ask for your approval. We have one TE, which we agree to. I think staff, for clarification purposes, instead of curb, meant sidewalk. But I'll leave that up to the commission and staff to decide.
I don't know if staff wants to comment on, on that.
Staff does want to comment on that, because yes, we discussed this in advance with the applicant, and that should say sidewalk.
Okay. All right. This is in Ward 2. Commissioner Powers.
This is a, this is so crazy that this is for us now for the third time in a very, you know, short-term, but it's all fine, so I'm going to move for approval if there's not somebody here who thinks otherwise.
No one has signed up to speak. Any questions from, any other, other questions from commissioners? Okay.
I move approval of item number 11, SPOUD 1522, with the modification to TE1, that the garage setback will be a minimum of 18 feet from the back of the sidewalk rather than the curb.
Commissioner Powers moves to recommend approval of SPOUD 1522 to City Council. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Claire. Please cast your votes when available. And let me clarify that that motion also includes the amendment to TE1 as read into the record. And the motion passes. We're now in line for item 12.
Item 12 is case number SPOUD 1521, application to rezone 3339 Southwest 74th Street from PUD 1761.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. The application before you would allow for the continuation of the multifamily project that is currently existing under PUD 1761. There are no TE's. There was a request made by Councilman Hinkle that we require the dumpsters to be in the northwest corner of the site plan. We are agreeable to that, so perhaps we add a TE to require that.
Excellent. Sounds like he's already off to a great start. Hasn't even been sworn in yet. Commissioner slash Councilman-elect Hinkle.
Anybody want to be heard on this?
No one signed up, and I have no questions.
Well, and I will move approval of spud 15.
Well, and I will move approval of spud 1521, adding the TE about the dumpster being in the northwest corner, and there we go.
And then you'll see it again in six weeks.
There you go, you get the double vote, wow. All right, Commissioner Hinkle moves to recommend approval of SPOD 1521 to City Council. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Goveen, please cast your votes when available. And again, let me clarify that that motion does include the amendment to, the creation of TE1 as read into the record.
Thank you.
Thank you, we're in line for item 13.
Item 13 is SPOD 1514, application to rezon 1044 Southwest 44th Street from R1, R402, and SPOD 45, and SPOD 556.
Once again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. The SPOD before you would allow for the continuation of the commercial medical facilities that exist in the area. The building that you see that says Med Office is a six-story tower, and so the uses we propose here are consistent with what you would expect to see at the Southwest Medical Complex. There was an error in the redlining that we need to correct, so there are no TEs, but we need to add back in two uses, and those are 8300.32 personal sales and personal services, as well as 8250.10 high-impact institutional, which allows for the hospital use specifically, so that we could operate a birthing center on the site, that is a use unit that would be needed. So we did talk to staff, I didn't think they had any concerns with those two use units, given their compliance with what's around them. So no TEs, but we would ask to add a TE to include those use units.
Excellent. That's 8300.32 and 8250.10.
Yes, sir.
So just as a point of clarification, was that, are those specified in the notice? Would someone, would someone receiving notice of this not, the use units are not included?
Correct.
Okay.
She said with a notice.
This is in, this is in Ward 6, Commissioner Goveen. Sure, well, I had a chance to meet with the applicant, I appreciate the clearly worded facade language, and yeah, I mean, I think it addresses proximity to the residential properties with prohibiting any new vehicular access to that side, requires sidewalks and landscape buffer along residential streets, so I think those are good moves. I don't have any other questions. Any, any other questions from commissioners, Commissioner Noble?
I, just a few things, and so meeting the zoning requirements, we're, we're going to be at the time that the new construction was, the current, current zoning requirements aren't met by the existing structure.
Correct, if, as soon as we go and pull our first permit, we're going to have to comply with current code, is the way this is written.
Okay. Are there questions from commissioners?
Again, just to protect the, the people around there, I, I noticed in the, in the photos that the dumpsters were not in an enclosure, and just in the middle of the parking lot, and so if they did just continue to use this building without doing anything, there wouldn't have to be anything done.
About that, right, in the short term, I guess, wouldn't it?
Correct.
Code enforcement, I mean, does they have any, I guess, is there any violation there of any existing rules with that? Are we aware? It's a good topic, in fact. Yeah. I have a few offenders that I can think of. Yeah. Certainly something to consider, I don't know, I think you've stumped us. Is it something that we would add a TE, that the existing dumpsters need to be screened? Until the construction begins or something? I don't, do we have that authority?
So Curtis, what Curtis is saying is, there's already fencing around the site. I mean, I, I don't know how this city would go back against what's currently there and presumably permitted, if it's not, somebody could call in a complaint to the acting center, and if not properly permitted today, then would have to be remedied, but retroactively requiring us to go do it now, I don't know that it gets us anywhere, considering the way that the SPOD is written, would require compliance upon the issuance of the first building permit.
Yeah, I don't know if that's a zoning violation or not, we can look into that, but if it is, then obviously we can report it, and they would have to screen it.
You'd have to do it.
Correct.
Yeah.
That seems fine to me. I'll, I'll move to recommend approval of SPOD 1514. Commissioner Goveen moves to recommend approval of SPOD... Oh, with the requested TEs, yes. The, the motion, and I'm assuming that Commissioner Goveen, you want to include the addition of those two use units, 8300.32 and 8250.10. So you're already catching on, this is the first day, you're doing great.
Thank you.
The motion is to recommend approval of SPOD 1514 to City Council, subject to the technical evaluation as read into the record. I think we're waiting on our technology. And the motion's been seconded by Commissioner Powers, please cast your votes. And the motion passes, thank you.
You.
We're in line for item 14.
Item 14 is case PUD 1945, application to rezon 3622 Northwest 192nd Street from PUD 1111.
Once again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. There are some representatives from On-Q here as well. The application is for a PUD that would allow for a new On-Q at the corner of 192nd and North Portland Avenue. North Portland Avenue is State Highway 74. State Highway 74 has undergone a pretty substantial overhaul in the last five to 10 years, it's now four-laned all the way, specifically this intersection is fully signalized with turn lanes in each of the directions, so the traffic that this carries, we think warrants the addition of an On-Q. You will notice something different than some of the normal On-Q applications, there's an additional tract, which is tract 2. When On-Q is acquiring this, the seller had them also acquire that, so what we've done in the PUD is just account for uses that we think to be appropriate at this, this location. The TEs have asked us to commit to a specific plan for that tract, which we are agreeable to. We're showing you exactly what we're going to build, obviously in tract 1, so what we would ask to do on the TEs is modify TE1 to not only say specific plans required, but then say that signage for tract 2 shall be reviewed and approved at the time of the specific plan within tract 2, which I think takes away the need for TE2. TE2 asked us to limit it to eight feet in height, because it won't be us developing it, we don't want to limit a potential buyer, but we want to give full discretion and authority to the planning commission at the time that there is an end user in tract 2 to review that signage. We've done that in the past, I think that's the way to do it, and then we agree to TE3, we would like to add a TE4 to not require us having sidewalks on State Highway 74. There will be sidewalks along 192nd Street, if you looked up and down State Highway 74, you would not see any sidewalks, what you'd see, that concrete you see are actually drainage channels, there's a lot of drainage issues, it's also state right-of-way, I'm not even sure we could put sidewalks in there if we wanted to, it's all state-owned right-of-way. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thoughts from staff on the sidewalks, et cetera? Barry?
Barry Lodge, Oklahoma City Public Works. We don't have any objection to removing the sidewalk requirement along Highway 74, but we will require them to submit a formal fee in lieu of sidewalk request in order to have that approved by the city engineer.
We're fine.
Cool. This is in, this is in Ward 8, Commissioner Noble, sorry. Should've known, far out Northwest Oklahoma City.
Yep, I didn't have any other questions, so if there's...
I did, just looking at it, I'm assuming that there, you'll be able to meet the separation requirement, if you, I assume that you weren't going to want tract 2 to have its own access from 192nd, and then you'd be able to do that, right?
Correct.
I'm assuming, or there's already something there, okay.
There's already, yeah, in fact, there's already a curb cut right there.
Cool. I have no objections, any questions?
I have a question, and the reason for this question became perhaps more obvious later, but I wonder, and this is a question, I guess, both for the applicant and maybe for staff, because I'm not really sure we have the authority to do this, but if we do, I'd like to do it. Would you be willing to notice the specific plan for the signage if it occurs at a later date?
So, I mean, that's not a me question. I don't think the application fees that the city has for a specific plan would cover the cost of sending notice, and I think, I don't want to speak for the city attorney, I think it's a terrible policy from a city's perspective to have an applicant providing public notice, so I think it's a long way to say no.
And here's my, here's my thing about that, and as I said, this will become more relevant later, but, you know, we're going to be deciding about the signage at a time when the people who live nearby, and who will be most affected by it, will not even be informed that that decision is coming on for hearing. This is not a recommendation we're making to City Council, we approve specific plans, so it stops with us, and that just doesn't, I don't like the feel of that, I just don't like it. I, I think that it absolutely is a good idea for us to reserve this decision for a specific plan at a later date, that part of it, I don't have any problem with, but the fact that then that, that decision gets made, you know, sort of in a vacuum, without people having awareness that it's being made and having the opportunity to speak to it and so forth, that doesn't feel good to me.
Well, I mean, maybe the solution, maybe there's not a way we can do this, you know, formally, but perhaps we just ask that the applicant, you know, reach out to that neighborhood, and, you know, insist that we have some feedback, as we've done in other cases where we say to the applicant, you haven't met with the neighbors, then we're going to continue this until we have some assurances that those conversations have taken place. I mean, we could put it back on us, I guess, unless there's other ideas, Sarah?
No, Sarah Welch, Planning Department, I just want to clarify, if you delete TE2, which was a specific size requirement, we would interpret the PUD to be the C3 zoning district, so whatever's allowed by C3 for signs, is what they would then bring back for the specific plan. We, I would not interpret that they would have anything larger than that base district would allow.
Yes, but we might very well want that...
For this beauty.
Yeah. We might very well want them to have something smaller than this.
For sure, and that's...
So, you know, it's, like I said, I don't, I don't have a problem with the process in terms of delaying the decision until we know what's actually going to be there and what kind of signage they really need and want, I'm okay with that, but I, I don't like the idea that it's sort of made at a time when the people who are most affected, the people who live nearby, theoretically more most affected than people driving by, you know, are not even going to know we're deciding, it's, it's, I don't like that.
What's the frontage of tract 2?
What is the length? Mohammed, do you have that distance?
200... 206.63 feet.
I thought you were going to solve this problem for us.
I mean, as the sign code reads now, because we don't have it changed yet, even though we're trying, that would allow 200 square feet? One 200-square-foot sign at 20-foot tall, 25-foot tall?
I don't like that.
Somewhere in there.
But at that height, with those neighbors to the south, that could be, could be obnoxious potentially.
That's why we're giving you the discretion to say what you think's appropriate along 192nd at that time.
Yeah, maybe we should cross that bridge when we come to it.
Okay, we're going to come to it pretty shortly.
Other thoughts? I'm, I'm out of solutions to that, I, I think, I'm sensitive to the issue, but I don't have a solution.
And, and you're going to have signage for the On-Q, you're going to, you already have signage for the school that's right next door, so...
The, the thing about the On-Q, and I, just for what it's worth, we kind of know what that package is, you know, and so that's more of a given. Okay, I'm going to let this go.
Until it comes back.
For now.
I can't solve the signage issue, but I have, I have one coming on facades.
Yeah, we agree to remove the drive it.
On-Q raised the question of this, the sentence of this section shall not preclude metal storage buildings that are ancillary to the dominant use on site, so I had asked if, I'm not used to seeing metal storage buildings with On-Q, so if you're okay striking that, I think that would be...
Yep, so that would be two additional TEs, just, perhaps I go through what I have.
Please, I was just about to ask.
We agreed to a modify TE1 to add the language that signage within tract 2 shall be at the discretion of planning commission during the specific plan application for that tract, with the deletion of TE2, agree to TE3. TE4 would not require sidewalks on State Highway 74, but require a fee-in lieu application to be made. Five, remove the language about the metal sheds, and six, prohibit drive it.
Yep, that sounds right to me.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts from commissioners? Commissioner Noble?
Okay, Mr. Chair, I would like to approve or recommend approval for PUD 1945 with the TE number one modified as read, strike TE number two, approve three, add number four, side, no sidewalk along Portland Highway 74.
And require the fee-in lieu.
With, with the required fee-in lieu. Five, was to remove the...
Metal shed language.
Language.
Six, drive it.
And six, to remove drive it from building facade.
Excellent. The, Commissioner Noble has moved to recommend approval of PUD 1945 to City Council. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Goveen, this motion does include the amendments to the TEs as read into the record, please cast your votes.
Yes.
And the motion passes, thank you. We're in line for item 15.
Item 15 is case PC 10882, application to rezon 10801 South Anderson Road from AA and AE2 to RA2 and AE2.
Is there an applicant present? Do we have an applicant for item 15? All right, well, then it sounds like, I think we, we, do we need to vote on moving this item to the end of the agenda, or do we just have the authority to move on since there's no applicant here at this time?
I think we can just slip it, we've done it before.
Yeah, we, we did that last meeting.
Okay.
We can just...
Just keep on moving, we'll come back, we'll come back to it. All right, item 16.
Item 16 is SPOD 1520, application to rezon 2105 Northwest 122nd Street from PUD 62A.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, on behalf of the applicant. This PUD, or excuse me, SPOD would allow for limited commercial and industrial use behind the existing restaurants that are there along Pennsylvania, this is kind of the last missing puzzle piece, if you saw an aerial, everything else has been developed but this. There are no TEs, there's no protest that I'm aware of, we'd ask for your approval.
Thank you, would you like to go, I'm going to preempt Commissioner Goveen and say, do you want to, do you want to talk about facades, so that...
This is good.
Okay, you're good with this one? Okay. Just...
It just depends on where the language is copied and pasted from. My staff watches these meetings, and in an effort to streamline the process.
And we appreciate it. I was, when I met with the applicant, this isn't my ward, I, when I met with the applicant, I, I did wonder, and maybe Commissioner Claire, you, you might remember this, the collision place next to the north of this, didn't we go through this very extensive conversation? Am I misremembering this? Went through this long conversation about screening, like landscape screening, was that not it?
Collision block, sort of like...
Oh, that's it, okay, that's why I kept thinking of that, like, didn't we come up with some rules for this? But again, I, I like that the parking and everything is on the interior, I'm in support of this project, I, you know, just was thinking about that, so, I'm just confused. Any other questions from commissioners? And we have no one signed up to speak, I think we're ready for motion. I cannot make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to recommend approval of SPOD 1520 to City Council.
The motion, Commissioner Claire has moved to recommend approval of SPOD 1520 to City Council. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle, please cast your votes. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
And the motion passes. Thank you. We're now in line for item 17.
This is PC 10884, application to rezone 1304 Northeast 14th Street from R1 to R4.
Thank you.
Robert Haggard, representing Checkers Limited Investments. I don't, I don't really have anything to say. Are there any questions?
Yes, this is in my ward, just a couple of questions. I believe there's an existing home on this property.
We own it?
Okay, so you-
It's going to be demolished and incorporated into this project?
Are you the owners of the property to the south as well?
Sir?
Are you the owners of the property to the south as well?
The convenience store?
The convenience store.
Yes, sir.
I think that there are a number of concerns, and, and you're going to hear this, I have no doubt, between now and the time you get to the City Council, I think there are some concerns about the way that that property is being maintained currently. I know that when I spoke with, with Councilwoman Nice, that was her number one concern, was about the way that that property is being maintained. The other issue is about having a conversation with the neighbors of this development about what your plans are, so that they have an opportunity to weigh in on what those plans are. I know that this is a straight zoning request, but I know that she would still like to see that take place.
Okay, so you mean you'd like a site development plan?
No, I mean just a conversation with the neighborhood about what your plans are, the timeline for your plans, et cetera. And then I believe that Councilwoman Nice is also going to be asking again about the condition of your property to the south.
Okay, now, so what's the process for that?
After you, after you receive a recommendation from this body-
Okay.
Of yes or no, six weeks from now, it will go to the City Council for their review.
Right.
I'm giving you advance notice that while this meets all of the standards that we have for the Planning Commission's review, that when you get to the City Council, those are going to be the issues that Councilwoman Nice is going to want an explanation about.
Okay.
And so my advice to you would be this. Number one, I'm happy to help you in facilitating conversations with the neighbors about what your plans are, so you can tell them we're going to build an apartment complex, tell them about it, tell them, receive any feedback that they may have. And also give them an opportunity to weigh in on some of their concerns about, again, the way that the property on, on the corner is being maintained.
Okay.
So, those are just my comments, but I'm in support of the idea of, of the rezone application.
So between now, it, I, I'm assuming, you're assuming it's going to pass?
I am.
And go to City Council, and between then, can, can you tell me how, so, so to urban, I believe it's Urban Development owns all the property to the east. There's an oil well on their property. They're not interested in ever selling that property, they told me. Then the, the old Ronald McDonald House is across the street. So I don't know what, other than across Lottie, there, there aren't any residential neighbors.
Well, we still want there to be, and we want to be inclusive in the way that we approach the redevelopment of these areas in Northeast Oklahoma City.
And talk to-
So there are, there is an active neighborhood association that is, that is to the, the property to the east. Everything to the east, there is a neighborhood association. That neighborhood association has a number of people who are concerned about the development of Lottie. And so they're going to want to have an opportunity to visit with you and share with you the concerns that they have. And make sure that those are being addressed. And again, I'm, I'm giving you advance notice, you're going to have, and you're going to come, get a lot of questions from Councilwoman Nice-
Okay.
About that.
So I need to reach out to them with more of a strategic plan and a site plan of what we're going to do and make some promises about custodial processes of the convenience store.
I would, I would recommend that.
No, we would.
And I'm certainly happy to visit with you. I know that your contact information is, is in this application. I, I can give you a call and we can visit.
Okay. How, how do I schedule a meeting with you?
Um, I can, I'll reach out to you.
Oh, oh, okay. I'm available.
Any other questions from commissioners? There is no one signed up to speak, so I think we're ready.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make them, I'll move to recommend approval of item PC 10884 to City Council.
Commissioner Claire has moved to recommend approval of PC 10884 to City Council. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes.
Thank you. And you, I guess you'll-
I'll reach out to you. Thank you. We're now in line for item 18.
Item 18 is PUD 1715-SP02, application for a specific plan pursuant to the approval of PUD 1715 located at 5001 North Pennsylvania Avenue.
Here we go. Good afternoon, once again, David Box, 522 Call Court Drive, here on behalf of the applicant, also here with us from Tulsa this afternoon. So this is a specific plan that has been continued many times. Part of the reason was, at the request of Commissioner Powers, we engaged a consultant to measure the projected impact that the sign would have from a, a light perspective. So what I'm passing out to you is what was provided by the consultant and subsequent meetings to kind of understand what this is really telling us. So light is measured by foot candles. And so what, the specific question was, what would the foot candle measurement be at the closest home? The closest home is located north and west of the site. And if you look at how the hotel, if you've driven by Northwest Highway in Penn, you've seen the construction, the hotel is slightly angled almost to the, to the north northeast. So when you look at where the, the closest house is, it's about 600 feet from what the board would be. And what the light people tell us is that at the 600-foot location, the light would be 250 times less than what is a typical measurement or acceptable in the industry. All that to say, the impact is nothing. There will be more impact from the lights that are on Northwest Expressway to the homes than there will be from this sign. So the sign will be located on the hotel, which again, the hotel is under construction now, if you've seen it. It will be done in a manner to promote things that are happening on site, brands that are going to be sold on site, and be a, I think, wonderful addition to what is a very high-end, very impactful development at one of the busiest intersections we have in Oklahoma City. So with that, we're happy to answer your questions. Again, the development team is here. You have before you all of the, the data from the specific plan. There will be additional specific plans that will be coming forward for the pad sites and all the other build-out, but I think this is the third, maybe, specific plan that you've, you've heard? Two?
SP02.
Okay.
It, this is my fifth year on this commission, and I still continue to learn something new. I keep thinking, maybe, you know, you'll get this, get to this point where you have it figured out and, you know, you're just redoing issues, but foot candle meter is new for me. I was like, I, and I know I'm sleep deprived, but I was, I was amused by the efforts here with David and coming up with, with this is pretty amazing, so. Commissioner Powers, do you have experience with this in your 17 years on this commission?
I do. I do. We, we used to talk about foot candles a lot more, now it's more about knits and things like that-
Yep.
Which make even less sense to me, but it's like I grew up thinking knits were something that you batted away. But yes, I know about foot candles.
A knit and a foot candle are the same thing.
Oh, they are? Exactly the same thing? Oh, I didn't know that, see?
It's an industry term.
Okay, okay.
What are we going to do without you?
I don't know.
I'm going to watch. I'm going to text him.
Any, any other comments from commissioners?
I, we talked about this, this is a non-accessory sign, I mean, this is an accessory sign, right? You're not going to sell ads on it to the public.
Correct. At the moment, this is an accessory sign.
At the moment? Is that what you said?
But I mean, in the future, if something changes, we'd have to come back and seek, you know, an additional approval. But what we are asking for today is an accessory sign.
Okay, so let's just be really clear about this. The PUD does not allow for non-accessory signage.
Non-accessory signage, yeah.
So they'll seek approval, but it's going to have to be like the whole thing. I mean, if they want approval for an access, a non-accessory sign, they're going to have to file a new PUD. I mean, it's not going to be like they can just come in and say, "Oh, we forgot to write that in there and..."
You mean there won't be some way for that in this mysterious sign code that I've been hearing so much about over the last three years?
Whoa.
So the P, the, just to clarify, yeah, the, the PUD does not have, does not allow the use unit for non-accessory signs. There is some language in a, in an amendment that mentions non-accessory, but I don't think that allows non-accessory. So I think, but the Planning Commission should be clear about this and future signage.
Gotcha.
And I'm sure this is in the sign code, but this sign has to dim down at night, and I mean, facing that intersection and that big of a sign, if it doesn't have those-
Yeah, we're not seeking to vary what the code would require from a brightness standpoint.
I am looking at the, this mythical new proposed sign code right now, and it, it has .2 foot candles at the nearest residential. It looks like, David, yours is .031-
Correct.
To me at the nearest, so.
A wall pack at 250 feet is brighter than a full-blown digital sign at 100 feet. The normal wall packs you put on a building are two and a half times as bright as a digital sign.
Which those neighbors are currently abutting, commer, you know, Talbot's is there-
Yeah.
Bank, those have wall packs, so yes. The impact from this will be nothing compared to what is already there and the lights along Northwest Highway.
Any other questions from commissioners?
Also, the, the other thing that we talked about very specifically, I, I did journey to Dallas to see the giant sign at the AT&T Discovery District.
What'd you think?
It's way cool.
Yeah.
And it's kind of mesmerizing, you know?
It's amazing.
It is. But it also makes noise. So one of the things that we talked about specifically is that this sign will not make noise. It, it, there will not be sound associated with this sign. So I think that's a big deal. And now we've come kind of full circle. But before I launch into that, I want to say, I'm really proud of this project. I've been a big supporter of this project all along. I especially am, um, proud, I guess, of the efforts that have been made and achieved in communication with surrounding property owners as this project has moved forward. And, and I think it has, it, it has every reason to be a fabulous and completely unique and different, um, project, and that it will become a real, um, asset to the city and to this area. And, and I, I do believe that. I think that, you know, the applicants have worked really well, not only with stakeholders, but also with staff, just at every level that I've been aware of. And I, and I think that that has really paid dividends and will continue to pay dividends. The one piece of this problem that I have left, it's really, really tall, it's way, way, way up there, and it is going to be visible for a long way off. And so I, my concern about that is lessened by the information about how much light it will emit. I'm not as concerned, you know, if I can look a half a mile away and see something that I'm specifically looking at. I, as, I'm less concerned about that than I am something that is half a mile away and I can still, you know, it's still intruding on me. I have some assurance, although I'm certainly no expert on foot candles, that, that that will not be an issue here, certainly not as much light is, is emitted by the commercial signage that already exists in this area. But as we were discussing about the previous case, the one thing about this that I am concerned about is the fact that some people are going to wake up one day, see this sign and say, "How did that happen?" You know, "I didn't have any notice of that. I didn't get to appear and say, 'Tell what I think about that.' I did not have notice of this hearing or this decision being made." And, and that is problematic for me, I must say. It made every bit of sense in the world then, and still does, that we have waited until we've gotten to this stage of the development to make these specific decisions about signage. But now that we're here, the fact that it's just us and nobody else, you know, it just doesn't feel good. It just doesn't feel like the right thing, you know, that people are going to feel that they did not have the chance to participate in that decision-making process. So for what it's worth, I think this is something that we need to give some thought to moving forward in terms of signage and approval, and at what stage and in what process we give it.
You may recall, this is a, this is a couple of years ago, we had a study session about the notice. And, which turned out to not be that productive, because that, I mean, it was already, and they were already improving it, and we were as satisfied as we're going to be able to get with that process. And maybe this is just another one of those examples of something that we need to discuss in a greater context of notice and the city's ordinances around notice. You know, I was previously under the, a false impression that, you know, we were mandated by the state to adhere to that, the current notice requirement, but it turns out the, the city can require more than what the state requires. And so maybe that needs to be part of our, our, our study session discussions that we're having right now this year. Maybe we can get a, a city councilman to, you know, do something about this.
Well, my question, my question would be, what are you going to do when a Chili's moves in next door? Tell everybody there's a Chili's moving in and they're going to have a sign? And then you want their input on a sign? So in reality, this is, I mean, it's a big sign on a big giant project, but it's still just a sign. I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, but-
I, I, on behalf of Mr. McNeil, I take offense at the idea of saying that it's just a sign. It's going to be truly unique and different, and it is going to be way, way up in the air.
And having spent the night at whatever the hotel is across from the Memphis Basketball Arena that has the giant digital sign shining in my window all night long, but this, I mean, not here, that, it's going to keep the people in the parking lot at Penn Square all awake and that's it. So I understand what you're saying, but you're really on a slippery slope if you want everybody's opinion on the signage going to go in on projects.
Well, I think, you know, for the most part, I mean, it really is sort of the unique nature of this one and its positioning, its location-
Yeah.
-that causes me to have that. I mean, it, for the, for the normal run of signage, I think our codes do a pretty good job, just as you were able to point out that, you know, like on the previous case where this was brought up, you know, that there's a maximum, and so that's the worst it can be, if, or best it can be, is the case, depending on how you view it. And so, and you have a parameter. Here, we're kind of busting those parameters open, you know?
Yeah, you're right.
And I, I think it's going to affect, you know, hundreds, if you talk about the people that will actually see it driving by or whatever, thousands, I guess, you know?
Which is kind of the point.
Yeah. Yeah, which is kind of the point. But it, but it's going to come down to the nine of us to decide, and, and that, without public input specifically on this issue.
But to Commissioner Hinkle's point, you know, narrowing it to the scenarios, like I, I just, I think we'd have to be very careful about how we make these rules, because again, when Chili's opens up, no, we don't, do we need to give notice? But when it's something this unusual, maybe we should. But it's, again, how do you word that so that we-
And so I'll, I'll use this opportunity for my little pitch. I really think that the sign code amendment we're about to adopt needs to come back to Planning Commission, because I think there are some things like this that need to be considered. You know, technology's changed so much. And, you know, when I, when I went to Dallas and I wanted to go see this sign and I just Googled, you know, "Big cool sign in Dallas," I mean, I got 20, you know, Google responses. And, and the range of what's available out there that definitely falls within our definition of a sign, but, but is, it's just so broad, it's so different than it was a very, very short time ago. And so, for what it's worth-
Well, let's lobby the City Council to see if they'll send it back to us. We've at least got one, we can lobby right now, so.
I think, I, I think it'd be a good idea. Is, is there anybody else who wants to be heard on this today?
We have no one signed up to-
Other commissioners have anything they want to say? Mr. McNeil, do you have anything you want to say? No? Well, then I am going to move approval for item number 18, PUD 1715's second specific plan, SP02.
Commissioner Powers has moved to recommend approval of PUD 1715, uh, the specific plan number two to City Council. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner-
Oh, wait, just, I'm sorry. Do I need to make TEs with respect to the fact that it's non-access, that it is accessory only?
No.
That there's no sign?
Because that's a use, apparently that's our, Jeff clarified that that was already required in PUD.
And what about the issue of the sound? Do we need to do a TE for that?
We can. You said to city council, this stops here.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, you're right.
This stops here.
It's a big plan.
Curious what sound comes out of the sound. I mean, was it like monkeys and chimpanzees in a zoo ad or?
Music. It's coordinated music. The one, the one at the AT&T Discovery District is actually, it runs television commercials. I mean, it's, it's the whole thing.
We can do a TE.
I'm all for that. And, oh, and then, I don't know whether you considered the text I sent you about the height of the sign. I think it would be nice to allow for the possibility that it could be lower. I don't know how that language is worded, you know, whether it's, there's a minimum or a maximum of where it's gonna start and where it's gonna end. But if they decided at some point in the future that they wanted to bring it down, because the thing about the one in Dallas is that it's just like one story up. And it's, you know, very much a part of the experience of being on this plaza, you know, and you're like just enveloped in it.
The engineering that would have to go into this building to be able to hang this sign, it's gonna be where it is.
Forever.
Forever. Yeah, this is gonna weigh a quarter of a ton, I mean, a lot.
Okay. Okay. So, I'll, I'll stop. I'm still managing.
So, how would the TE read?
Um, the, there won't be any sign associated with the operation of the, any sound associated with the operation of the sign. Is that fair?
Yeah. There are.
Be careful.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Yeah.
My phone charger emits a sound.
The, the sign makes a sound.
Correct.
So, you gotta make sure that.
You're talking about audio.
Audio. Sign does not allow audio, but it's, it makes a noise. It, I mean, it's not.
I would say, like, external speakers and audio will not be permitted.
Okay.
Okay, I'll do that.
Can you give me the full sentence so that we can just make sure we're clear in the record?
External audio and speakers will not be permitted in conjunction with the operation of the sign.
Okay. Is that sufficient? I'm looking at legal counsel. Sounds good.
Okay, that's it then.
So, the motion is to approve of this special, of this specific plan, subject to the technical evaluation as read into the record. Please cast, that motion's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes when available.
We kept it waiting too long. We went away. We're gonna have to voice vote? Try again?
I think we'll do it over again.
Again, then. I said, there we, there we go. Nope. That says I moved. Did I second it?
If only there was a system that could go in the corner with light bulbs that would immediately tell us.
It was. And it was great. It was so great.
Mine just says waiting.
Yep, I'm still showing waiting. Why don't we just do a voice vote then, if you don't mind, just to move forward? Commissioner Claire?
Aye.
Commissioner Powers?
Aye.
Commissioner Fraley? Commissioner Hinkle?
Aye.
Commissioner Gauvain?
Aye.
Commissioner Noble?
Aye.
I also vote aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
We're now in line for item 20.
Okay, item 19 was previously deferred. Item 20 is PC 10870, an application to rezone 3037 Northeast 23rd Street from the I-2, R-1, and C-3 districts to I-2.
I believe that they intend, we did have a meeting with the developer. My understanding was they were still intending to do this item, which is probably why they're not here. So.
Oh, yes, of course.
I would, I would move that we continue this item till the May 25th meeting, you think, Commissioner Powers?
I think so. Because they had still not started on their PUD.
PUD?
Yeah.
So, I can't make that motion, but I would.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we continue item PC 10870 to the May 25th meeting.
Second.
Commissioner Claire moves that we continue item 20 to the May 25th meeting. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. He's not here. Hinkle, did you get a chance to vote? And the motion passes. We're now in line for item 21.
Item 21 is PUD 1943, an application to rezone 9900 Piedmont Road from the, from R-1 to PUD 1943.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Brad Reed, the civil engineer, is also here with us. This is a PUD that would take this R-1 and make it a modified, single-family, consistent with what you see in PUD 1805. We have provided a 20-foot buffer along the north. We have required 6,000 square foot lots along Piedmont Road. This is a continuation, oh, could you go back to the, this is a continuation of what you see in PUD 1727, the R-1 to the north. This is an area of the city that has seen a lot of growth and will continue to do so. It's worth noting that Piedmont Road is a state highway. The city and ODOT had a joint project a couple of years ago to condemn and acquire necessary right-of-way to expand that. Typically, cities and states don't go and expand the road unless they're anticipating a lot of development. That's what we're seeing here. You're just about a mile or so off of Northwest Highway. There are two interchanges from the new turnpike in close proximity to the east. So, there are two TEs, both of which we agree to.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. So, does, does this layout contemplate the right-of-way that's been taken?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, all the necessary right-of-way has been acquired.
Okay.
Uh, this is in Ward 1. Commissioner Claire?
Yeah. Given like Mr. Box said, it's a continuation of two other developments in the area. So, it is in line with what we're seeing out there. So, I don't have any questions. I don't believe there's anyone here to speak on it.
There is someone signed up to speak on item 21.
Great. Let's hear from him.
Any questions from applicant, from, for the applicant before we hear from our neighbors? All right, we have Betty Sackett. And please give us your name and address for the record. You have five minutes to address the commission.
I am Betty Sackett. My address is 1112 Kingston Drive in UConn.
And would you mind pointing that mic closer to you? My wife can't hear you if, if, at home, if, if you don't move the mic down.
Do I need to start?
No.
Perfect.
Okay. I own the 75 acres directly north of the proposed zoning change. My grandfather purchased this property in 1914. I have followed this development of this 320 acre since 2006. We have before us today an application for a PUD to change the zoning from R-1. This is to allow and variance to primarily allow for R-1 sized lots of 6,000 square feet to a number of lots in the interior of this phase to 3,600 square feet. May I remind the commission of the wording in the municipal code as follows. Section 59 dash 41001, Purpose and Intent. The purpose and intent of the planned unit development and simplified planned unit development provisions are to, A, encourage innovative land development while maintaining an appropriate limitations on the character and intensity of use and assuring compatibility with adjoining and proximate properties. B, permit flexibility within the development to maximize the unique physical features of the particular site. C, encourage effective use of land in the placement and clustering of buildings in open areas. Provision of circulation systems that achieve greater connectivity and the conservation of natural features, natural topography, wooded areas, areas of historical significance and environmentally sensitive areas. D, achieve a continual continuity of function and design within the development. Encourage diversified living environments and land uses and provide a development framework that will create, strengthen, and/or enhance a strong sense of neighborhood and community character. E, a vehicle for negotiating modifications and standard development requirements in order to both encourage innovative development and protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community. Has a preliminary review been requested?
Are you, I, I think, I just need, I'll just.
I just asked that question, but anyway.
I'm sorry.
In section 59, 411, applicants are encouraged to request preliminary review by staff prior to formal submittal for rezoning to a SPUD or PUD. Preliminary view is most effective at the conceptual design phase so that traffic, circulation, drainage, infrastructure, and other contextual impacts of the proposal may be considered for conformance and with the comprehensive plan and applicable policies, guidelines, and regulations. I further realize that the well-oiled development machine of Roche Coleman has dotted all the i's, crossed all the t's, to the point that this hapless commission has no alternative but to approve this zoning and could create a dangerous precedence in the development for Western Oklahoma City. In fact, it is so confident that this will happen that the next item on the agenda is the approval of the preliminary plat that reflects these changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sackett. I, just a few things, just to clarify the process. It is a very common practice for developers who are rezoning a property to also request the preliminary plat. And if the zoning does not, is not approved, then the plat doesn't go through. So, that is standard. Have you had an opportunity, I don't know if you've had an opportunity to review the staff report that does provide that analysis that you're mentioning, then I might ask staff. I know Sarah's up here, but maybe we can provide that to you. But, but your questions regarding the impact environmentally on traffic, all of that was contained within this staff report that the commission has access to. So, staff from traffic, from all of those different departments of the city, provided their feedback to us. And so, that's how, that, we're using that to base our decision. So, just for clarity, we can, we can get that to you.
Can I make a clarifying point or question? On TE2, an internal pedestrian trail system shall be provided between tracks and two common areas, A and B. So, we agree to that as long as sidewalks count for that. Do sidewalks count for that? Okay, yes.
Okay. Without needing any rewording of that language.
Yeah, we agree to it, if that's.
Questions, comments from commissioners?
Mr. Box, have you reached out to Betty Sackett?
Uh, Mr. Brad Reed did reach out to both people that submitted letters. Yes, ma'am.
Not prior to that time, not before?
I'm sorry?
Not prior to that time, not in the development of the plan or?
Well, no. I mean, there'd be no way to, to, to know that somebody existed prior to submittal and notice being sent. I mean, we don't, I don't think any developer makes the habit of going door-to-door to all the neighbors.
But, but, okay, I'm sorry. After notice was sent.
Correct. Once we, once the letters came in, we called both people that submitted letters.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll just add, I mean, there's two significant, one significant natural feature on the east end of the site that they're not even touching. So, I mean, I just think this does respond to some of the natural systems of the property. There's that other pond in the northwest corner is probably just a stock pond. But as far as existing vegetation goes, you know, I think they're, ballpark, I mean, you're probably a quarter of your site there that's being left as-is, not developed. So, it's not like they're trying to pack every, every lot they can in here. They're doing something feasible with the land that they got, so.
Well, and, and I'll add, I mean, I think this, this is part of our, our discussion. This fits well in our discussion from the study session. We're talking about density and where it's appropriate and where it's not and, you know, the development of these more suburban parts of Oklahoma City and what that looks like. You know, I, I know that there's some differences of opinion about lot size and whether, whether or not it's appropriate to have these smaller lots. I think, you know, I, I think some of the newer homeowners, there's a lot of, are a lot more supportive of, of smaller lots with less yard. And so, that is a housing type that it seems to be popular these days. That doesn't make it right for us to approve them, but I do think it's important that the housing that we do approve is what the market wants, so.
Well, and I, I also think that there's a lot of misinformation out there that smaller lot sizes decrease property values. I'm not gonna go into that. But I, I don't, that's not a valid argument to me.
Well, to your point, you know, I, I think it's not only your first-time homeowner buyers, but, you know, as people age and don't feel the need to have a house that's big enough for an entire family. You know, there are a lot of people who like to downsize and they don't wanna take care of all and do all of that. So, I think that kind of brackets the more traditional, you know, family home with the lawn and all of that, you know, both on the front end, people who don't have the time and people on the, on the back end who don't have the will to take care of all of that, you know.
I also think locating this, the higher-dense areas, smaller lots in the interior is also good for, you know, the neighbors as well.
My friend.
Yeah. And you know what you're getting when you, when you buy it. Any other comments, questions from commissioners?
I will just, I'll add from Ms. Sackett, this is a recommend, recommendation. So, it goes forward to city council. So, you'll have the opportunity to speak at that meeting as well. So.
I was going to ask about the trail network, but I, that's been clarified by the sidewalk satisfying that requirement. So, I guess I'm happy with that.
Will these homes be built out of ethels?
Private only.
All right, with that, I'm prepared to make a motion to recommend approval of item PUD 1943 to city council.
Commissioner Claire has moved to recommend approval of PUD 1943 to city council. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Sorry. Thank you. We're in line for item 22.
Item 22 is the preliminary plat of Redstone Ranch North, located north of West Britton Road and east of Piedmont Road, and this is related to the last item.
The last time, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. This is the companion preliminary plat. There are six TEs, all of which we agree to.
Awesome. Commissioner Claire?
I have nothing further from this. If anyone's here to speak?
Ms. Sackett?
I'm back. So, I don't have to say my name again. I'm Betty Sackett. I own this 75 acres north of, of the proposed zoning change. A staff report of the OKC Planning Commission dated August 25th, 2016, stated in part, "The developer is proposing 1,217 single-family lots in several common areas in the 323.7 acres, yielding a gross residential density of 3.76 dwelling units per acre." The lots in this development range in size between approximately 6,500 and 12,500 square feet. A front building setback of 20 feet is proposed on all lots. That was back in 2016. It is interesting to see how the change in lot size that evolved as the development continues, continues to the west end. Never mind that little detail. This preliminary plat will enable them to put 400 lots on 60 acres in Redstone Ranch North or 6.64 dwellings per acre. I again go to the municipal code, section 59, 4200, General Design and Development Guidelines, which says in part, "Density." Proposed residential density should conform with the city's comprehensive plan and should be allocated in a manner and at a scale that will be comparable with adjacent developed neighborhoods. And as you all know, the development of the neighborhoods to that are larger. Relationship to abutting uses, the master development plan shall show the relationship of the PUD to abutting properties such as commitments to landscaping, screening, earth and berms, and similar techniques. To, A, create a visual transition of landscaping to adjoining lots and developments. Screen inapplicable uses minimize any negative impact of the development on adjacent sites and roadways. It is appropriate to specifically establish areas with high limitations. It is appropriate to specifically establish areas with high limitations where a transition to more intense uses or where a higher-intensity development abuts a lower-intensity area is proposed. Where a PUD or SPUD proposes a mix of uses which will generally be proposed, incompatible with a conventional development, the PUD or SPUD's design statement should specifically establish appropriate guidelines to assure harmonious development." And I asked that question if a preliminary review had been submitted, but anyway. The closest grocery store is almost five miles. Britton Road is a two-lane rural road, the only ingress and egress for this development, and is expected to accept hundreds of additional cars in addition to the school traffic. There have been two serious accidents at the intersection of Britton and Piedmont Road in the last two weeks. The widening of Piedmont Road to a super two-lane will probably not alleviate the problem, just increase the speed down that road. Do the math as to the density and size of the interior lots of this development. What size home can you build on a 3,600-square-foot lot? The house could be no wider than 20 feet. A 14-foot garage and a 6-foot porch. A 1,400-square-foot home would be 20 by 70 feet. Maybe no garage. Where would the children play? There's no park areas, only a detention pond which would fill with water during heavy rains. Where would extra cars go besides parked on the streets? Can school buses navigate through these streets? I asked this planning commission, and I asked the engineer, "Is there a subdivision in Oklahoma City with these sized lots?" I was told there was one, but no houses yet. I was also told that the developer is working on house plans to fit this configuration. This property is not level. It is higher than my property, and no amount of grading will keep the runoff from going onto my property. What recourse will I have? What is happening to the orderly development of subdivisions in Western Oklahoma City? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sackett. Commissioner Claire?
I'll just ask if the applicant has anything they want to respond to.
So, our main entrance is off of the state highway, so we will take access off Piedmont. Additionally, there will be a park in the development right here.
I'm sorry, could I see that?
Sure. I will also add that these are public streets, correct?
Yes.
So, they'll be built to every city standard, the standard -- just because the lot is smaller, the streets are still going to be the same, just like any other public street in Oklahoma City. So, as far as the navigation of those streets by a school bus or any other cars, it will be exactly the same as any other.
I'm just asking if there's cars parked in the streets where school buses can navigate?
Yes, because it's the same as any other public street.
David, is this like Palermo Place?
I'm sorry?
Palermo Place down on Western that we put the RZ1?
So, it's a different product than that. It's a similar product to what exists to the south here. It's a product that most of the production home builders are doing now. So, that's Home Creations. This is Roche Coleman, but it's not too dissimilar.
Right, but it's a lot the same.
Correct.
You've got the smaller lots in a larger lot neighborhood, but they're toward the center of the neighborhood.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Commissioner Claire?
Well, I will just add, you know, per our report, that the design of this preliminary plat conforms with the subdivision regulations as they relate to subdivisions of more than 200 lots. I'll also add that it's 85 acres, which requires 2.73 acres of open space, and the applicant is providing 25 acres of open space. So, they're above and beyond the open space requirement, so.
Did you have something that you wanted to add?
I wanted to compliment Ms. Sackett. She's really done her homework, and she's asked all the right questions. The fact that we may be satisfied with the answers to those questions doesn't negate the fact that she took the time and energy to do your homework, put together your presentation, and come down here and share it with us, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you. I'm just trying to protect the legacy to hand on to my children.
Well, I would recommend, if you haven't -- I think you did send a letter, but if you have not, I would recommend you definitely reach out to Councilman -- who was our councilman?
Carter.
Carter.
Brad Carter.
I would recommend that because in six weeks, the zoning is going to go back to -- is going to go to the city council. So, you still have one more opportunity to share your concerns before final approval. Now, the plat is going to get approved, it sounds like, today, but we'll go forward. Thank you. Commissioner Claire?
I'll move to approve item C-7552.
Commissioner Claire moves to approve C-7552. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. You'll be missed.
Oh, great, okay. And I'm glad Sarah reminded me, we have -- we do have an applicant present, I believe, for item 15, so we're ready to hear that.
Item 15 is PC 10822, an application to rezone 10801 South Anderson Road from the AA District to the RA2 District.
Hello, my name's Russell Lynn. We just wanted to rezone a five-acre property to RA2 to split it to two, two-and-a-half acre lots. I'm sorry, I wasn't really dressed for this meeting today. I didn't realize I was coming.
You're perfectly -- you're dressed totally appropriately.
But that's really -- that's the gist of it.
Excellent. This is in Ward 4. We don't have Commissioner Privet here, but does staff want to respond to their recommendation? Oh, you're ready?
I spoke to Commissioner Privet, and if you're just dividing it in half into two-and-a-half acre lots, he doesn't have a problem with that. So, staff put denial, but I think that's appropriate for the area, and I'm familiar with the area enough to know that.
Appreciate that. I don't know, Sarah, do you all want to respond to? Okay. I'm in agreement with Commissioner. Sounds like Privet and Hinkle on that. Any questions, comments from commissioners?
If not, all motion to recommend approval of PC 10882 to city council.
Commissioner Claire has moved to recommend approval of PC 10882 to city council. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe that brings us to the end of our agenda, and it's not -- it's just after 3 o'clock.
Oh, yeah.
Wow.
See what happens when you come back?
There are no additional items. We're on to communications and reports. Planning Commission committees have no reports. Planning Commission members, Commissioner Claire?
Nothing for me.
Commissioner Powers?
Well, just to say farewell to Commissioner Hinkle, we certainly --
We'll miss you.
Commissioner Fraley?
I have nothing.
I think we have something. I don't know if -- are we allowed to share? So, Commissioner Fraley is going to be resigning, but for a very exciting and very good reason. And do you mind sharing with the commission? Is that appropriate?
I was given the opportunity for promotion in my company and -- which required a relocation to North Carolina. So, my family is relocating to North Carolina in the next couple of weeks.
That's not that far of a commute every two years.
Not at all. Only 15 hours.
So, this is your last -- this is your last planning commission meeting?
It will be, yes.
Well, we've loved serving with you. You've done a great job representing Ward 3, which is very challenging, as you've gotten to see. Lot of controversial things that are happening, so you've been a delight to work with and great to the neighbors who come here, and they often aren't happy.
No.
You have such a sunny disposition and are always very kind and gracious, and that makes it a lot easier to really work through some very challenging issues. So, you will definitely be missed.
Thank you.
For your time.
It's been a blessing to get to serve with everyone, and thank you for all the grace that everyone's given me in learning and working with the community and supporting me in meetings, and thank you. Thank you for everything.
Well, we'll be -- we still want to hear back from you, so you can come back and visit us.
For sure.
Be sure to tune in online.
Yeah, there you go. Torture. Commissioner Hinkle slash Councilman-elect?
It's been a great six years. All you newbies are just learning every day, and it's awesome to watch, and Kamal stepped in, and, I mean, they've done a great job, and I owe a whole lot to Janice. Janice and I don't see eye to eye on 98% of the things, but she's such a voice of reason. I mean, she makes me rethink so many different things, and the staff, all of the staff. Curtis, you guys don't know the songs that Curtis has written for me to actually turn into music, but about every other week, he gives me a poem that he's written that would be a great country and western song at some point in time. I won't share them with you for -- but anyway, thank you all very much, and I won't be a stranger. I'll stick my head in often.
Love it.
I have to ask, have you made a decision about who you're going to put in your place?
I have three very good candidates, and I would like to introduce them to the development community, as well as some of the staff, to make sure that we all work well together. So, an architect, an investment guy, and a lawyer. So, that's all we need is another lawyer out there.
The lawyers aren't all bad, but they can be pretty obnoxious.
One little last piece, I guess, of advice, if that's not too presumptuous. You know, I think it is so important for members of the planning commission to have a relationship with their city council person. Over the years, some people have, and some people haven't, and I think it's made a real difference when they have had.
I find it odd that the planning commission is a six-year term, and the council's a four-year term, and you're right, you don't get to necessarily pick your planning commissioner. I mean, I was fortunate that David Greenwell picked me and kind of in line to run, because we talked about this six, eight years ago. But, yeah, I find it odd that if you're at odds, then how do you, I mean, that's it.
That's great.
Signing off.
Commissioner Govine?
No, just best of luck, and sorry to see you both go. It's been fun learning, and, yeah, thanks.
Commissioner Noble?
Same with me. Bye, Constance. Good luck, and I'll be watching that on YouTube.
I will say, Commissioner Hinkle, I'm very excited for you. You will do a spectacular job representing Ward 5, and we've -- I've loved serving with you, and just appreciate your friendship, and just appreciate who you are, and just am excited to see your leadership for our city. So, Ward 5 is in excellent hands. I think we're ready for the planning department. Sarah?
Nothing.
Nothing. Municipal Counselor's office?
No, thank you for the hospitality today. It's been a pleasure being with you.
All right. Don't get used to short meetings. Citizens to be heard? Mr. Warrior? He's good. All right. I believe there's no other business, and seeing none, we are adjourned.